I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Call the October meeting of the Arundicoyt zoning board of appeals to order. Before we get underway, I'd like to take a few minutes to cover some preliminary matters. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The minutes are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for purpose of a record and minutes, but not as a verbatim transcript. In order to help her identify for the minutes and the records who's saying what when you come to the podium, please identify yourself each time with your name. The first time that you come to the podium, please also give her your address. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify himself or herself, state their address, then they'll pause, raise their right hand, I'll swear them in, and then they'll have the opportunity to present their case. The reason we swear in the applicant and nobody else is so that in the event, as has unfortunately happened in the past, that we later learn that some of the information that was provided was either inaccurate, false, or misleading, there are potential remedies available for that, whereas if the applicant is not sworn, there are not. Once the applicant has started their presentation, members of the board may interrupt at any time with questions or further comments. Once all the interaction between the applicant and the board has been completed, we'll open the case to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and then direct any questions or comments that they have to the board, not to the applicant or their representative, and not to members of the audience. We have three categories of public input that have been identified so far. Those are those who wish to speak in favor of the application, and we'll hear everybody who wishes to speak in favor first, then those who speak in opposition to the application, and we'll take them as a group second, one at a time, of course, and then those who aren't sure if they're in favor or opposed to the application, or who have no opinion on the application, but want to talk to us about the application in some respect, and we'll take that category last. After all the public input has been completed, the applicant or their representative will be given an opportunity to address any questions or concerns that arose during the public input portion of the meeting. Once that's been completed, the hearing will be closed, and we'll continue on to the next case. After we've heard all the cases that are on our agenda, the board will take a recess, and I'll announce when we'll be resuming, and at the end of the recess, the board will return to deliberate on the cases as to which we had hearings this evening. With respect to the order in which we consider the cases, we consider them in the order that they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant remains present. So if the first applicant on the agenda has left, we will take the second application and go through the agenda that way, then go back after we've heard, considered, and deliberated on the, and made decisions on the cases for the applicants who are still present, we'll then go back to the top of the agenda and deliberate on the cases for which the applicants have already left. If your, no further input is allowed during that process unless it's specifically requested by a member of the board. You're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation, but if you leave and you're interested in knowing what the board's decision was on any particular case, you can either catch it on TV, or you can call tomorrow morning to the office of planning and zoning, and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was. Last month, I went over a lot of general things about the, what the role of the board is. There was one thing I left out, which I think is fairly important, and that is that if, a lot of times when we have controversial applications, we will hear how many people are opposed to it, and that we'll hear that there are large numbers of people that are opposed to it, and that there are however many that are in favor of it. If it was a matter of how many are opposed and how many are in favor, you wouldn't need us. It's not up for a vote. It's, we have standards that we apply, and there may be 100% opposition to the application, but if the applicant has met the standards that the law says are necessary to be given the relief that they're asking, our obligation is to grant that relief, because we are not here to respond to public opinion, we're here to apply those standards that I reviewed last month, and apply them to the application, and determine whether or not the applicant in each case has met their burden of proof and is justified in achieving the relief. So, having clarified that, we'll go to our first case on our agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda this evening is case number ZB 1610-1, upon the matter of request by Matt and Catherine Cusack for an area variance to construct a two-car garage exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 51 Northfield Road in an R1 residential district.
I'm Matt Cusack, reside at 51 Northfield Road.
You can raise your right hand, the other right.
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So, yeah, I submitted my paperwork. I'm interested in replacing an existing two-car garage that is original to the house. I would say it's typical of garages built in my sort of neighborhood, in that it's a very small two-car garage, you know, and I don't know exactly when it was built, but it has long since served its purpose, and it's kind of needing some repairs, and rather than repairing it, because its foundation is questionable, I'm really interested in replacing it with a modern, I'll call it a modern garage, with a shed dormer, storage loft. As such, the height requirement is, as I've read it, two feet more than the town code allows. So, I did, as, I guess, in the process of submitting this, I have kind of gone around to my neighbors, the neighbors who I've talked to, who, you know, were supportive, kind of signed this paper, I bring that with me, and then I did also just bring some elevation drawings to just kind of show architecturally what our house looks like, and also what the garage will look like, just so they'll kind of get an idea of really what I'm trying to do, and it's, ideally, I'm just trying to build the garage such that it matches architecturally the house. Well, the packet has the garage details, but it didn't have anything showing the house, so that's really why I just added that. It shows kind of the shed dormer that's on the house, and kind of basically mirroring that on the garage.
So, as I understand, the letter that you submitted, the garage that you want to build is going to be 624 square feet?
Uh, 16 by 24.
Which is 276 less than the limit that's prescribed by the town, which is 900 square feet, so you're well under that.
Right.
And you're looking for a two-foot-high variance so you can store things in the top of your garage?
Yep.
And that would take the place of an extra shed that you're allowed to have in the garage that might take up more room and add to the footprint of the property, right?
Exactly. Yep.
I just have a question. I, I mean, I know the way the code reads is that the height is based on the midpoint between the bottom of the eve, I think, and the peak of the roof. The drawings that you submitted show that part of the roof, I guess, is raised where windows are?
Yep.
So, is it the, I guess, the outline of the roof at the edge of it, or is the height calculated based on the raised or elevated roof where the windows are?
It's based on the, the, so not, the portion that's not elevated with the, so basically not the shed dormer portion, it's the, I'll call it the major portion of the roof.
The major, okay.
Yep.
Either way, it's just two feet that you're looking for, two feet higher. Did anyone complain to you in the neighborhood?
Nope. I mean, everybody I talked to is supportive, and...
And the drawings looked really good, for what it's worth.
I would indicate that what Mr. Cusack has passed around to us with respect to the neighbors, has signatures from residents at 85 Northfield, 36 Northfield, 42 Northfield, 30 Northfield, 16 Northfield, 9 Northfield, 27 Northfield, 63 Northfield, 264 Rawlinson, which I believe is the property that would have but to yours from the south, 57 Northfield, 52 Northfield, 45 Northfield, 39 Northfield, 79 Northfield, 95 Northfield, and 85 Northfield. Just so that that's part of the record. That Rawlinson was your neighbor immediately to the south?
Yeah, exactly. They're right behind me, I would say, have the most direct sightline to the back of the garage. And again, you know, they had no opposition, they were supportive.
Probably a better view than a garage that's leaning and ready to fall down.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Are you doing this job yourself, or are you hiring it?
Yeah, so, I would be doing most all the work, I would say, just that. My neighbor, who is a contractor, who, he's, I'd say, I've often helped him repair his cars, and he's basically said he would love to help me when I do get around to replacing my garage, so...
How long do you think it will take?
Uh, hopefully, you know, a month, month and a half.
You plan to get it done before the snow?
I'm sure gonna try.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who wants to talk about garages, heights, or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1610-2, upon the matter of request by Brian Lucasey for a special use permit to harbor three hens with coop pursuant to section 235-70 of the Arundicoyt town code on premises 21 Rudman Road in an R2 residential district.
My name is Brian Lucasey, and I live at 21 Rudman Road.
You raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm here in front of the board tonight to request permission for three hens and a chicken coop to house them. And this square foot area is 15 square foot in my backyard at 21 Rudman. The purpose of this, having hens, is to know more where our food comes from in our house. We spend a lot of time growing fruits and vegetables and herbs, and having three hens to harvest the eggs, use the eggs as part of our diet, is the primary purpose, just to simply know where more of our food comes from.
I believe that we previously approved some hens for a neighbor of your chickens, for a neighbor across the street from you?
Yes, sir.
All right. And am I taking it that that's the person that you said you're buying the prefabricated coop from?
Yes, Katrina and Steve, yes.
All right, so they're...
It's sitting in their garage right now.
Did they give up theirs?
They did.
Okay. All right. So you're gonna use the same coop that they had?
Yes.
And the same hens?
No.
Okay.
There's no, there's no hens or birds in their yard at this time.
Okay. All right. And do you know why they, as I recall, when they came in front of us and wanted the permit to have them, they were pretty enthusiastic, and they had some of the same reasons that you have? Do you have any indication as to what caused them to lose their interest in having eggs from the backyard?
Absolutely. We've had several conversations with them. They're in the process of expanding what they're doing, not here in Arundicoyt, but they're looking to purchase some land that is where they're going to have more abundance of animals, and chickens and hens are going to be a part of that operation as well, where they're expanding too. So because of that timeframe for them, it's less than a year of the move, they didn't want to continue with what they were doing, in terms of the small scale, and they're spending a little bit more time in terms of investing into that land and developing it before they build their house and move on to it.
All right. So that didn't have anything to do with any issues relating to the neighborhood or anything like that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
All right. We got a letter tonight that was distributed to us from the neighbor that backs up to your property on the south, on Titus Avenue Extension?
Yes, sir.
And apparently she's just put in a new vinyl fence that backs up to your chain-link fence?
Yes, that happened this week.
And her concern is that if you put the coop in the southwest corner by the fence, where you indicated that you intended to, that that might cause her dog to scratch her fence, to try and get at, if he can detect the hens. So she was wondering if it would be possible for you to move the coop, like, to the back of your house, instead of the back corner, so that that would be less likely to potentially aggravate her dog. Is that something that could be done, or is there something behind your house that would prevent that?
That's absolutely a possibility. Her dog, JT, and I have a pretty positive relationship, where he comes running over the fence and jumps up, it's almost, it's almost like a second dog, so in that aspect, just me and my son and my partner walking in the backyard causes JT to come over to the fence, and now that it's been erected in the last three days, we've just noticed that, you know, he's already jumping onto the fence. We will absolutely be considering, we could move the location to where it's proposed currently, because tonight's the first night that I saw that letter, and I speak to Megan almost, at least on a weekly basis, if not several times a week, until the fence blocked our visual of actually being able to see each other. So, yes, that is a strong possibility. We'll take into consideration, absolutely.
And then in your letter, obviously, you've apparently done your background check to figure out what we usually look at. You already told us that the hens are going to be cared for at the East Ridge Animal Hospital, which apparently has a chicken and hen wing, or something, because we hear that all the time. And you have no objection to having the hens checked every year to make sure that they don't have any communicable illnesses or anything like that?
Absolutely. That's very important to us as well to do.
And do you have any objection to the town coming in and doing an annual, or at least an inspection after, I guess at this point it would be six months to a year?
No, sir.
Were there other conditions that we usually? I know those were the two big ones.
Cleanliness.
Oh. How often do you clean the coop?
The coop, I mean, it depends on the number of birds. Three birds, it's going to be just a weekly.
Okay.
That was one of the conditions, is that we were gonna have a limit to the number, and then they couldn't be replaced if they lost one.
Right. So you're asking for three, I think we've approved up to four in the past, for an ongoing basis. I think one lady had eight, and we told her that when they got to four, she wasn't going any higher.
Do you have any experience raising chickens?
Yes, absolutely. When I was a teacher in South Carolina, I graduated from SUNY Brockport, I went down as a physical educator, and one of the great opportunities I had as being part of a committee, but our agricultural science department at the high school, as part of the curriculum, was raising hens and chickens and roosters at the school itself, so I was a part of that operation for three years, and several different role capacities with being part of a feeding committee. Yet, we just recently moved to Arundicoyt in October from East Rochester. Seven of our neighbors in East Rochester had chickens and hens. It was a big aspect of my son and I going over there and going a part of some of their daily routines and chores, just to gain experience on his level, because he's eight years young. So, there, those two by themselves, there's been other situations in the past, but yes, there's been a lot of interactions daily with seeing the upkeep, the maintenance, taking care of, preventing rodents, as well as predators, but most importantly, just to making sure the welfare and well-being and upkeep of the hens is optimal, because that's as a big aspect where our food's coming from. So maintaining where they're eating, maintaining feces, maintaining cleanliness is 100% of a practice that we've been engaging.
You mentioned rodents. We've began to hear more and more about people having difficulties with rats that have chickens or rabbits. In fact, there was an article in the DNC this week, and maybe you saw it, where it follows battling rats because of the chickens in the neighborhood. Maybe you want to pass that up?
In the city, I saw that.
In the city, yeah, yeah. There's no boundaries when you're a rat, so... And we've seen others, we had a, we had a lady tell us that she woke up and looked out towards her pool, and there was a rat drinking water out of her pool, and she believed the rats were attracted by the rabbits that the neighbor had. And we've seen other cases where we're beginning to hear more and more about rats, mice, and other things being attracted to chickens and other animals as well. The CDC has recommended not having backyard chickens because of the problems with salmonella. They're saying if you're gonna have them, make sure that if children are involved with them, that after they touch the chickens, that they wash their hands, and you're probably familiar with all this. But New York State right now has the most cases, reported cases of salmonella traced back to chickens in the country. So that is a concern that I think we should be taking fairly seriously.
I mean, one of the things that your neighbor put in the letter is the concern over rodents, and I guess my question would be, if there was, if, if for some reason there were a rodent problem, would you be willing to contact professionals to handle it, like an exterminator, or would that be something you'd try to resolve without the use of hired experts? I mean, how would you resolve that issue?
Those are excellent questions and excellent points. There's already some preventive measures going into it, but one of the things I want to address about the neighborhood, and one thing that we've seen in the last month and a half, is a minimum of three cats going around the neighborhood. We found, in terms of rodents, chipmunks, on our property specifically, three dead chipmunks. So in terms of rats and rodents, there is that one aspect of a predator of a domesticated cat, as well as a wildcat being in the neighborhood. In terms of the yard itself, there is a chain-link fence around it, around the coop what's going to be secured, but there's going to be another border where there is, with a simple little boundary, where it's gonna be dug eight inches down to prevent the digging of this. So there are gonna be some preventive measures, because that's where the food's going to be kept inside of there, to prevent attracting some of these. Yet if they were to actually appear, be visible and affecting the neighborhood itself, absolutely, that'd be immediately addressed, both professionally, as well as whatever was initiating the attraction to be eliminated.
You mentioned going, digging down eight inches. One of the first applications that we heard for chickens, and we've heard many of them, that I recall, he was putting, going to go down two feet with chicken wire underground around the perimeter, because animals can dig under and burrow in, and this article mentions the rats burrowing under things. Can you go down two feet with that chicken wire in the, in the ground to guard against that?
Absolutely, yeah. That's a, that's a more highly recommended depth, especially with larger predators coming within, especially with something that could burrow, like a raccoon might be larger than a rat, or a coyote per se, and that is definitely possible.
All right.
That being a homeowner, does the homeowner have to approve this? He's a renter. According to this, the owner of the house is Alphonse Haef in Germany, and is a property manager, so if we were to approve this, do we need his permission?
That's in the application. There's, there's approval through an email that's in the application, from Alphonse. Yes, I was very open with the homeowner, as well as our landlord, about what's taking place, and they both offered their support for tonight.
I didn't see that in the packet, the copy of the packet that I was given. Was it part of the original packet?
Yes, yes, it was a part of the original packet.
It may just not have been copied for us, but there is a consent from the owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Not a problem.
It was a, it was a paper that had a front and back.
When does your lease expire?
Our lease is up in July of 2016, or 2017.
Thank you.
I assume that if you don't renew your lease, the chickens are going with, or the hens are going with you?
100%, that's actually part of our agreement with the current owner of the house. We are restructuring our lease agreement, not only to pay a little bit more of a security deposit, but to make sure the yard gets returned in the exact condition it is currently.
Okay.
I do have a letter here that was sent to all our neighbors, as well as some conversation pieces that I could, this is in addition to our current application.
So what you provided was a series of email exchanges?
Yes.
Is it possible to have something that he's actually signed, sent over from Germany?
It is possible. Pending the approval of the board, the lease extension can absolutely be submitted as part of the application. That's gonna be an official document that we have.
And is the lease extension going to specifically reference hens being kept on the property?
That is the specific purpose of it being signed, yes.
All right. Because what we have, we don't have anything signed by him. We have email exchanges, which, the authentication of email is a subject that hasn't been nailed down yet.
We ourselves have never spoken to him. We've had some changes made to the house. Everything's been done through Steve, and absolutely, we could get something, I imagine, sent from Germany, but we've never spoken to him ourselves.
Well, I'm going to assume that Steve has some contract that he signed with Mr. Haef, that then when he signs, binds Mr. Haef, and that would satisfy, I would think, that issue, but, and he's local, right? He's in...
Yes, he's in Pittsburgh.
All right. And he's the one who would be signing on the lease extension?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open the hearing to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about hens? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
I see that Mr. Saftik is present. I would make a motion to remove case number ZB 1609-1 from the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes, seven in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are all present. So, Mr. Saftik, well, do you want to call the case? So Mr. Softek, well, do you want to call the case?
Yes, sorry. Case number ZB 1609-1, upon the matter of request by Amir Softek for a special use permit to harbor town rabbits pursuant to section 235-70 of Aron Dacoit Town Code on premises 76 Paxton Road in an R1 residential district.
Raise your right hand again. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I don't.
Okay.
I do have a lot of stuff here.
I have a procedural question before you get going for our counsel. Last month, we did the hearing. And we tabled it. And last month, Mr. Upton was with us. And this month, whoever, I think who was, I think Mr. Polino wasn't here last month, so Mr. Upton sat in on that hearing. Should Mr. Upton sit in on this one?
He doesn't have to, no.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
All right. Just wanted to be clear, because I'm not still new to this, you know, process of a substitute member. It's nice to have, but I wasn't sure how.
And Mr. Polino's free to vote, of course, but if he feels more comfortable abstaining based on the testimony that's presented tonight, he can do that as well.
All right. So Mr. Softek, when we were here last month, we, you agreed to have it tabled so that you could talk to an exterminator to get some indications about whether or not anything about the operation of the, or the manner in which the rabbits were housed and the food was stored was contributing to any increase in rats, in their opinion. And then also, you were asked to look into the possibility of moving the rabbits into the garage with some access to outside for the warmer months, I guess. So if you could bring us up to date on your efforts in that regard, that would be helpful.
Sure. I did have exterminator come over. I do have agreement for three months. He's going to be coming every month, once a month, so I can present that. I did ask him what he thinks about everything that I have in the back, and if the rabbits are the reason why the rats are coming on, or what. And he didn't say that the rabbits are causing rats to come to my property, but just to make sure it's preventable, he suggested three months period. So you can see next month if they are eating the poison, or how much activity there is from such. So we can, we can go from, you know, from then on with procedures. But I just to make sure.
Does the poison attract the rats?
I, I mean, they gotta eat something, so I think they'll go for it. He packed them, he put like eight of them, I believe. He said how many he used per station. He used two station on each corner, or on each corner of the hatches. So if anything comes to my property from anywhere else, they'll be attracted to that more than the rabbits. And I did ask him more questions, but he personally just talked to me, and he says that everything looks nice, the food is kept in containers that are closed, the raccoons or mice or rats cannot get to it.
Can you speak a little bit louder? I really can't hear.
Sure, sorry. So he did, so he did see my water containers and my food containers for each hole of the rabbit hutch, and everything is really nice. They can't get to it, it's all metal. My extra feed that I bring out for our weekly feeding is in a five gallon container too, so it's also closed. And you did see it yesterday, too. So they can't get to the food easily, even if they come over. They'll more likely go to the poison station or somewhere else to look for food.
And what about the possibility of housing them inside the garage?
We talked, me and my wife, and she's gonna have to have car parts in garage over the winter, and it's just not, it's just not feasible for us to have them in garage, especially during summer months. If I can present, we also went to that rabbit show, if I can present trophies that we won. And I also have, I didn't present this last time, but I do have signed papers that I, as a gift, rabbits that are gifted from me. And I didn't have this list from last year, but I did have it since I got, since I asked for this permission. So I can present it, too. Those are gifts that are given rabbits away, not sold.
So these are awards and trophies that you're, that were passing around, those you just won in the last month?
Yes, that was Batavia Show, just after hearing, the weekend after hearing. That's where we went. So it shows that they're really quality rabbits, and there were other few that were judged, but judges picked mine, you know, again.
And the service contract with the exterminator says that it's going to be evaluated after three months. Do you know what that evaluation?
It's, it's gonna be evaluated after a month first, see how much activity there is, if he has to put more stations or increase the value of, increase the number of the stations or poison. It all depends after first month. I can't really predict what's gonna happen, but we're gonna know more on the date that he's coming again.
So does he assess that by the amount of the poison that's gone?
By, yes, because the stations are closed and locked. Nothing else can get in there but rats or mice.
Oh, so the rats and the mice go into the station, eat the poison, die in there, and then they're, they stay in there?
They can die in there or in their holes, or wherever they go. They can be around the yard if they're dead.
So they can get out of it?
Yes, it's a big plastic stations that big buildings have around.
It's the black plastic boxes.
Okay.
It's a black plastic box with the holes in it.
All right, so they can go in, they can get their food, poison, they can go out?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's gonna, I'm gonna meet with him again next month, and from then on, he's gonna let me know what we need to do.
And so if one of the, if we were to approve your application with the condition that you'll renew the contract with him if it's determined that it's warranted, you would be willing to do that?
I'm willing to kill all rats in town if I have to.
Okay, good.
That's just for three months, but we can extend that if there's a problem occurring, if they keep coming, I.
Need to get the Pied Piper here.
I would get BB gun or whatever.
All right. Better check with the police to make sure if that, whether that's okay.
I'll go with poison for now.
All right. That sounds good.
And that's only for one year before we move out.
Right, you're gonna, you mentioned that, you're gonna be moving out in a year, you said?
Yeah, within a year. House is almost done to be put on market. We still gotta do the garage roof, but as gentleman was here yesterday, we did some more work in the four season room, so it's coming along.
And then you're gonna move out into a more rural location, is that it?
We're looking for agricultural district that allows rabbits or other animals, and that's, that number is not just specific. So we're just looking for a little bit more room. Plus, the house has only one bathroom, so we're outgrowing the house itself. That was the plan before all this, anyway.
Mr. Lucchese maybe gave, give you some information on where you can find a place like that, because I understand he's moving to a place like that, right? Didn't you say you were?
The neighbor is.
Neighbor is. Oh, the neighbor was. His neighbor across the street might be able to give you some information.
Sure. He'll be among good people.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Has any of your neighbors complained to you directly in the last month about any more rats or anything coming around?
Nobody else came to talk to me. The first time I heard was last time they were here.
The lady with the pool next door, did she?
She never actually came. Opposition claimed that she came and talked to me, but she never talked to me.
Yeah, when I looked around yesterday, I didn't see any holes or crawl through, through the fence. There's about a two feet difference between the floor of his backyard to the floor of her backyard. It's kind of raised. It is pretty tight between his house and her fence line. So I didn't observe anything, anything off.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about rabbits and rats, or anything else? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, and we will be in recess until 7:50. recess until 7:50.[91.89]
Yeah.
I can't come up with some different groups, but.
We're still present, so we'll start at the top of our agenda with the first case pertaining to 51 Northfield Road. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. And does anyone wish to make a motion about the only non-animal case on our agenda tonight? I'll make a motion then that we grant the variance based on the following findings. The construction of the new garage that will be two feet taller than the height restriction is not going to alter in any significant respect the character of the neighborhood. In fact, it might even enhance the character of the neighborhood by making, by being a little larger, it eliminates, hopefully, or at least postpones, the need for a possible additional shed to house additional things, since it'll be housed up on the loft level, by making it more compatible with the siding and the style of the house. It will be more attractive. The alternative that doesn't require a variance would be building it lower, but then a loft wouldn't be practical. It is not a substantial request. The size of the garage overall is well below the limits that the code imposes. It will not have any adverse physical or environmental effect if it's granted. It is really not a self-created situation because the previous garage is leaning and falling down and is structurally questionable. And the only part of it that would technically be self-created is the wish to add the upper loft level, but that's not such a factor that would warrant, in my view anyway, denying the application. Is there a second?
I will second, and I'm going to second this one. And I would also note that this applicant, the square footage of the total garage is less than 900 feet. So while there is a two-foot difference, which is small when compared to the actual structure, which I think is 23 feet in height, combined with the fact that it's a smaller footprint, I think that those are grounds to grant the variance.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all present. Sounded to me like there were seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. The board is unanimously composed tonight. All present. Move on to the second case. This relates to the application to have three hens at 21 Rudman Road. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that until we see a copy of a lease agreement or something in writing from the property owner, I don't know that it's necessarily appropriate to take action on this at this point until we get something a little more concrete. I'm sure we could, if council thinks it's a good idea, we could make a motion contingent on receiving the paperwork, but.
I was going to suggest that that be a condition of the special use permit, that before the hens are actually in residence, that that be provided to the town.
I mean, I'll leave it to the chair's discretion on that point, but you know, I'd be curious to read what it had to say and some of that stuff. I don't know if it's just something we can say contingent on some piece of paper with a signature on it.
If the board is inclined to approve, I think it would be acceptable to do it as a condition. But if Mr. Paulino's concern is based on the email that he saw, that he thinks there might be some limitation on what the property owner might want to happen there, then I think the point he raises is a good one, and it may be better to table it until next month. But if the board is comfortable with the email, you know, that the landowner is essentially giving carte blanche authority to the tenant to apply for chickens at the property, then I think it could move forward with a condition.
At this point, I'm not going to make a motion, but if the board feels that it's appropriate to make the motion and it's seconded, I will consider it.
I make a motion that we table it until the, all the necessary paperwork, lease agreement, and signature from the owner is provided to the board.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. So, Mr. Lucchese, what that means is we need to see that amended lease agreement, the extension, with the signature of the agent and a copy of the agent's agreement with the owner as soon as possible. And then we'll.
He asked, and I shared that with the board, that he wanted to see the board's approval, that we would follow through on our end and meet up to the town's standards with approval to draft a lease agreement. So it's almost like.
It's a catch-22, kind of. So if you could, you could have that lease extension agreement include a provision says that it's contingent upon the issuance of the special use permit. What we have to have before we can grant it is something from the owner. That's a necessity for us. And the email, because it's, there's no signatures on it and that, it's not going to be sufficient. But if you get that all buttoned up with the provision in it that it's contingent upon a special use permit being issued by the town, then we have everything we need to be able to go forward and either, well, either issue it or not issue it, depending upon the merits of the application.
And if he's unwilling to do that, to simplify things, all we simply need is a one- or two paragraph letter that says, as property owner, he gives you the authority to apply for a special use permit to have chickens or hens in the town of Arondacoit. That's all that letter needs to say. And then, you know, you could do the lease amendment portion after the fact. We just need a document that authorizes you to make application to the town of Arondacoit for a special use permit. And that needs to be signed by the actual owner of the property, unless you can provide us a document that says the agent has the authority to sign on his behalf for matters like this.
If that's provided before the next meeting, does that take into consideration that having approval, or is that, you'll have to wait another 30 days? I only ask that because of the weather and the season, the timing of this is kind of unique to the wellness of the birds themselves, bringing them home. I believe in the next seven days, I could provide that document signed by the house owner and/or our property manager.
Yeah, this would be something that the board would review at its next meeting, and there would be a vote at the next meeting. We wouldn't be able to do it before that.
I guess I just directly asked him to do that, and he wanted to hear from you guys approval first, so.
Well, we got to have something from the owner that says that you have the authority to make the application.
I mean, not that we're trying to create a difficulty for you, you just have to recognize that the town of Arondacoit has a lot of rental units in here. And the email itself, while it does say certain things, it's not even an email directly from the owner, it's an email from the owner through the agent to us. And just to make sure that we do things correctly for all property owners and make sure that no one's trying to pull a fast one, because people do try to pull fast ones, we just have to make sure that everyone follows those rules. And that's why we really need to do something that's signed by the owner saying, yes, this person has the authority to do this, because there may have been circumstances we've had in the past where renters have said certain things that are not true in terms of what the owner says. So we're not trying to make it difficult for you, it's just that because there are a lot of rentals in Arondacoit, and there may have been an issue like this in the past where someone said something that wasn't accurate, we just need to make sure that, you know, we have the proper authority, that the owner is on board with this, not just the renter.
And the other thing is that as a board of appeals, we have a limited amount of jurisdiction, which means authority, to handle things. And we don't have authority to handle things for non-owners of property. So to give us, if we were, if we were to go ahead tonight and grant you the special use permit, the owner could, you know, say, hey, I didn't authorize him to do that. What are you doing? And that would make it invalid. So that's a prerequisite to us being able to act. But it doesn't say that he has to, all it has to say, as council said, is that he gives you the permission to ask us. And it needs to be signed. The email isn't going to work.
And if he has any questions, you can actually send him the link to the rebroadcast of this hearing. He can watch it himself.
All right. Then the last item on our agenda is the application pertaining to 76 Paxton Road, which is an application to harbor 10 rabbits at that address. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get a record of the vote from the tabled item.
Oh, that was, carried seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we were all present.
Great. Thank you. My apologies.
That's all right. I made the motion, and Mr. Intini seconded. The one to take it off the table.
No, we're talking about the previous one to table.
Oh, the motion to ta, the last one?
The last one to table it was motion on the table by Mr. Evans and seconded by Mr. Lepary.
Yes. Yes, and that also passed seven in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we were all still present. I got confused about the tables. All right, this application off the table for 76 Paxton Road is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to Mr. Softik's application?
Can we talk about this in for a minute first? If I understand this right, he's hooked up to try to control the rat population with poison and so forth, and I think it's a three-month commitment, correct? So we're saying we want to vote on this tonight, not knowing if the rat population's going to get under control in three months. And I wonder if there's some way that we could table this again and have it come back in a month or two and get an update on the rat population from the neighbors.
Or I would think, I mean, if this is a special use permit, we could put whatever conditions or limits we want. Could it be a temporary special use permit contingent on him giving this documentation in three months' time confirming that Victor rat, whatever they are, blah, 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 blah?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would work.
Yeah, and I also had thought that as a condition of a special use permit, it would obligate him to extend the contract with the exterminator if the exterminator, after reviewing, determined that rats were being affected by the poison. To ask him to control the rat population, I mean, I'm not sure. I mean, we've had reports of other rats moving into town. And, you know, he's got eight rabbits, and if he, he's down near St. Paul, and across the street from St. Paul, and at the end of the streets at the other side are elephants, lions, tigers, wolves, all kinds of animals with all kinds of feed that rats would be attracted to. And they move out from there, and they're, you know, they're finding that Arondacoit might be a wonderful place to live too. So while they're unwelcome, I'm not sure that it's his rabbits that are really attracting them. And as long as he's taking all the steps that he can take to not exacerbate any situation, I think that's about the most that we could ask of.
Yeah. Also, I think the three-month is to determine if there is a rat problem in the area, not to control the rats. So if I remember correctly, the exterminators' comments were, we'll put these boxes here to see if there's rats, but he didn't think, from what my conversation with Mr. Softik was, he didn't think the rabbits was causing the rat issue. He didn't find an issue. So that's what the determination is, is to find out if there is a rat problem, not how to control the rat problem.
I don't think there's really an issue that there are rats in the area. The neighbors have reported seeing them. And we know that they were over about a mile from there when the, where the ducks were, and that, they were able to bring that under control. So I'm hoping that this will help with that, too, but.
Rats tend to leave behind a lot of rat droppings, too, so it's pretty obvious if you've got rats.
Mm-hmm. So does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this? All right. I'll make a motion that we grant the special use permit with conditions. The first condition would be that the permit will be for a period of one year. The applicant has indicated that he intends to leave town and move at the end of the year. Another condition would be that the applicant will follow through with the contract with the exterminator. And if the exterminator determines that indeed rats are being controlled through the steps that he's taken, that that contract, or his, or the services of another exterminator, will be continued during the term of the special use permit. That the applicant will be allowed to continue to have the eight rabbits that he has now for the term of the permit. And if the rabbits that he has now have babies, how long does it take you to place the baby rabbits? Is two months enough time? Four months. Any babies that are born to the rabbits won't be at the property for more than four months. The applicant will allow the town to inspect the, his property within the next six months. And, I don't know if there are any other conditions.
Can I ask, how often do, how often do the rabbits have litters, or kits, or whatever they're called? Whenever I breed them, but the period of them being pregnant is 30 days.
30 days?
31 days. And then they can be weaned from parents after eight, nine weeks.
So how often do you have, how often are you having baby rabbits?
We have litters in the spring and in the fall, but nothing has been bred for the fall.
Are you planning on it, though, right? So how many baby rabbits will you be, roughly? Will there be 20 of them, 30 of them?
It all depends how many there is in the litter, but.
What's the average?
Not more than three does will be bred for this season.
Three, so how many, what's the average litter when they have?
Can be one, eight, 12. Can be, can be none if they don't survive vacancy.
So it's hard to determine how many, what the, what the amount is written down on our paper.
It will be limited to adults, right?
So eight adults, and no more than three does having litters in the fall, and no more than three does having litters in the spring. Does that work?
Sometimes I might have more than three does, depending.
You think you can go without breeding them in the spring? I mean, you've got three now, right?
Sure, I can go without. I went without right now.
All right, so if, no more than three in the fall, and no more than three does being bred in the spring, and the babies will be placed out elsewhere as soon as possible, but no longer than, no more than four months after they're born. Okay? All right. Any other conditions that anyone?
Did you have veterinary care there?
I hadn't, I hadn't put that in. That at one, at least one point during, let's say, within 90 days of this permit, you can provide a certificate from a vet to the town that says that they're all in good health. A letter would suffice.
Can I object to that?
You can object to it, but.
Well, I do have papers how to treat my rabbits myself. So none of them are sick right now. So I don't know, I don't see the point of me bringing them to the vet when they're all healthy. I would just be spending a lot more money.
Because, well, the reason that we like to have that is that we have a vet telling us that they're healthy as opposed to you. No offense, but.
Do I have to bring all eight of them there or just one? I mean, it's going to, it's going to be a lot of money for them, eight pets, I think. That's just my opinion.
Well, we, we have all the ducks and hens and various animals that we've approved in town. We've always had a condition that there be a vet certification at some point. I know it's only for a year, but we'll give you six months. I'll say six months for a vet's certificate that they're, and all we're looking for is a letter from a veterinarian that says that there's no obvious signs of sickness or anything. Yeah.
When I do show these rabbits, if they're sick, they'll be disqualified, but you know, they're not, obviously, they're not, so.
Maybe a vet associated with one of the shows could write you a letter that says that the rabbits are fine.
With no cost, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. We're not, we're not concerned about, you know, that you have to incur a cost. We're not trying to get income for the vets in town. We're just, we want to make sure that the rabbits that you've got, or the hens that you have, or the chickens, or whatever it may be, that they're, they're healthy.
I can, I can provide that.
All right. Any other conditions that I overlooked?
Do you want to include in there that he has to furnish the results of the Victor Pest Control Company's inspection in three months?
Yes.
Otherwise, we wouldn't really know what the status is.
All right, we're just looking for, he's going to give, ask him to write you up something that tells what the results are and turn that into the town in three months. All right, so we'll add that. Any other conditions? Is there a second to that motion?
Get turned in to.
The building and zoning department. Ms. Ivors, probably, right?
Probably Michelle, actually.
Michelle will get the certificates.
Mr. Chairman. I don't know who's to be held responsible.
Mr. Chairman, we did have last, last month stating about the cleanliness and smell to be kept, kept low. That was one of the discussion points.
All right, the other condition would be that the food and water will be kept in appropriately sealed containers to minimize the, any odor or attraction to other animals other than the rabbits, and that the cages will all be cleaned weekly, at least weekly, in order to minimize the, any odors and keep them as sanitary as possible. Any other conditions that I missed? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we're all present. Motion carries. Seven in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. We're all present. That concludes the last item on our agenda. Also with our packets of applications for this evening's meeting, everyone should have received a copy of the draft of the minutes from our September meeting. I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Paulino abstains. We have one abstention, six in favor, one abstention. We're all present. And that now concludes our meeting, and we are adjourned.